We're going to reconvene the regular meeting of the State Board of Education. And did a lot of work this morning, so we're a little further ahead of schedule than we may typically be, but even though public participation is scheduled for 1:30, we thought since we have so many guests and many of them are already here that we would start with public participation. And I mean, Hamilton will start working through that, and when your name's called, come on up and tell us what you're thinking.
Okay, the first form I have is that of Dan Quisenberry, and I'm looking around the room, I don't see him, so I'm gonna get him.
He thinks 1:30 probably.
Yeah, he does probably. So I have, do I have everyone's forms? I have 12 forms, which means I'm gonna give you up to five minutes, but that's right the borderline, so if I get one more form. So, we're gonna start with Sharisa Tota. She's here representing the Youth Policy Leaders of Metro Detroit. She resides in Farmington.
Hi.
Hello.
I have some papers to pass.
Pardon me?
Thank you. So, my name is Sharisa Tota, and I'm a junior at Farmington High School, and I represent the team of all of us, and we actually represent voices of thousands of students in Metro Detroit and to the state of Michigan who believe that all students deserve equal opportunities. And I think being the State Board, you'd agree with that. And we believe that currently all students in Michigan do not have the same opportunities, and you have the power to change that. We're here to advocate and encourage the need for diversity education in all schools throughout the state of Michigan. The six of us are high school students, but we're part of a larger group called the Youth Policy Leaders, and the Youth Policy Leaders, we strive to strengthen and challenge discrimination and social and racial barriers that hold us down. And we're here today because we knew that you would support our work, and we're here to ask for your help. So, one of the biggest problems that we face is segregation, and metropolitan Detroit is the most segregated neighborhood in the country. And so metropolitan segregation leads to institutional inequalities and social injustices. This means that there's disparities between schools. Some schools have abundant resources, high technology, but others have outdated textbooks, unsanitary bathrooms, and unsafe environments. And so recently Detroit's sports and ice skaters just scored the lowest in a four-year national test, while suburban schools boast new technology and new resources just a few miles away. This is not fair. We believe that schools should promote equal opportunities and equal outcomes for all students regardless of race, ethnicity, and their location, and they should challenge policies and practices that limit equality learning. The goal of the Michigan State Board of Education is to attain substantial and meaningful improvement in academic achievement for all students and children. And since students in Michigan currently do not have access to, access and exposure to diversity learning, this goal is not fulfilled, and that is the board of, that is the goal of the State Board of Education. So adding diversity education to all schools will ensure that there's a substantial and meaningful improvement in academic achievement in all schools. So we need to take immediate action right now. Enhancing the curriculum with diversity learning ensures that all students will have equal opportunities. It teaches students intercultural skills to be successful in the global world today. And with diverse goals, we'll prepare stronger citizens for our workforce. This resolution was also very successful when tried with the Summer Youth Dialogues Program. This program brings about 75 youth from all over the metro Detroit area of different backgrounds, different racial ethnicities, and they come to have an intergroup dialogue. And some of us are graduates, graduates of that program, and we believe that this program has completely changed our lives. It made us really passionate about this kind of work, and we're here because of that. But these efforts have only made a significant impact on just a few students. We want every student in the state of Michigan to have the same opportunity, and by incorporating diversity learning into school core curriculum, you can achieve that. So, in schools, it could include courses in which students share personal experiences, develop communication skills, discuss similarities and differences. It can also be co-curricular, meaning that it does not have to be a separate class. It can be involved with English classes, world history classes, math classes. And studies have shown that when students work and study in a, in a room with people of different backgrounds, they learn better, and they can, they achieve better. And in communities, it includes after-school programs dealing with prejudice, discrimination, and justice. So the need for diversity learning has never been greater. We all now live in a truly global world where everyone is required to be able to compete with everyone from around the world, and we need to prepare Michigan's workforce to be able to do that, to compete for all the jobs. It has been proven, but we understand there are some obstacles to this. Not every school can afford another class or for core curricul, core curriculum. Not every school has time for ready to tackle that. The first is it can be implemented to existing classes. So if a school does already has all the core curriculum requirements and there's no room in the day to adjust that, they can be implemented to English classes. For example, at my school, we have minority voices, African-American literature. So this gives students exposure to different classes and different voices, so that can be done. For the obstacle of cost, there are numerous grants and scholarships for schools that are willing to participate in this, but we do believe that if we work with the state government, some kind of funding can be worked out and set aside for this.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. And so in conclusion, we really need your help in trying to make sure that every student in Michigan gets an equal opportunity, and we believe that you agree with us, and we would love to meet with you in the future to discuss future opportunities and try to develop a plan with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very well done.
You know, the former superintendent in Farmington, and that would be me, would be very proud of a student from Farmington who was so brilliant.
Could I take just a moment? I just wanted to point out to my colleagues that I gave you a little brochure on this very wonderful program that I've been able to participate in from time to time. And then on the back, the Mosaic Youth Theater of Detroit has taken the very words that these young men and women have spoken in the dialogues and made them into a performance that's actually enacted by actors of the youth, of the Mosaic Youth Theater of Detroit, which is a powerful performance, which has been already given to more than 100 schools, and is open to, they, they'll go anywhere from the theater, but it's all built on the words of the young men and women you see here today. Very important. We would be here more for them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Jim Farrar from Mylan, representing the Michigan Coalition Against Racism in Sports and Media.
My name's Jim Farrar. I'm the founder of the Michigan Coalition Against Racism in Sports and Media in this state. We've been around for a number of years, but we formally organized a couple of years ago. I'm here this afternoon to talk to you a little bit about this Clinton School District, one of your Michigan schools. As some of you probably know, April 29th, the school district voted to keep and retain their Redskins mascot logo nickname. During the 18 months that we approached this school board, they refused to put us on their April 15th, we got notified that they were going to hold a special school board meeting, so we sent word out to different organizations and different state government entities to come down and speak to these people, one of them being this state school board. I understand everyone had commitments for that particular evening, but what I would have appreciated was at least a response to the various emails and telephone calls that came up here. We didn't get one reply. We did have the Director of the Michigan Department of Civil Rights show up, and during that public meeting, he was verbally attacked by that state school district superintendent. So, the hostile environment in that community, I'm gonna share with you some of the things that were told to us face to face. These people said that they were coming to that meeting en masse, and hell's coming with us. Then they told us that they're gonna run these engines and niggers out of our town. That's the kind of environment that these small communities that hold these Native American mascots, that's the kind of attitude they have towards minorities. With a 98.5% Caucasian, there is no diversity in these little towns. What I would appreciate was that if somebody could've came down there from this state school board, somebody, staff member, janitor, somebody, come down there with that resolution from 2003 and put some iron in those words that's on that paper. Because no iron, no paper can hold the iron of your words when you come down there and try to at least show some sort of commitment, some sort of commitment to the people of the state of Michigan that you're serious about that resolution. Fifty-six school districts in this state carry these racist-based mascots. Fifty-six. Eighteen months we've been dealing with the school district of Clinton. We cannot approach every school district in this state. Sadly to say, in 2010, that we're probably gonna have to revert to some sort of legislation to remove, or at least attempt to remove, these race-based mascots and logos across this state. It's a sad thing. They tell us that they're honoring our people. We're telling them we're not honored by it. We have our own way of honoring our people, and it's not on the 50-yard line at halftime. Those feathers and that face paint that these kids wear at pep rallies and at football games is all sacred. Everybody here has their own form of religion. You wouldn't appreciate it if you found parts of your religious out on a 50-yard line or on a basketball court, on the gym floor, being trampled on. There's just no place for it in 2010. It needs to go. Within the last month, the state of Wisconsin finally passed legislation banning the use of Native American mascots in their schools across the state. Also within the last month, after over 80 years, University of North Dakota dropped the fighting suit. Finally, Department of Higher Education took the lead and voted to get rid of this stuff. So...
Fifteen seconds remaining.
The state of Wisconsin can do it, why can't the state of Michigan do it? But we need leadership coming from this board. We need help. It's not about being politically correct, it's about being correct, morally correct. And it's gotta start someplace, and it should start here. Should start here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tom Wilson from Wyandotte, representing AMG.
My name's Tom Wilson. I live in Wyandotte. I'm president of the Michigan Gender Equity Team, and I'm a member of the Michigan Women's Commission. I became aware of discrimination of girls and women through experiences that my daughter experienced in high school and after 10 years on the Wyandotte School Board. Since then, I've met and worked with many females and males who also advocate PR treatment. After the enactment of Title IX, opportunities for female athletes grew greatly, but discriminating decision-making continued in Michigan, and it continues today. Making decisions that are different for females and males by the Michigan school leaders serving on the Michigan High School Athletic Association Representative Council is wrong, and it's wrong when these decisions are made by school officials representing their schools on local area athletic leagues. In my opinion, the fact that this kind of discrimination continues, I believe this means that school leaders still are not educated enough to recognize and avoid discriminatory decisions. Our letter to Superintendent Flanagan discussed how the league leaders in the Capital Area Activities Conference concluded that when boys and girls varsity teams played Friday night double headers, that girls would always be the early warm-up game. The boys would always be the primetime second game. We thought that was wrong. We said in our letter that a Michigan Department of Civil Rights Elliott Larson complaint was filed. Since that time, league, the league has agreed to alternate who plays in primetime. One year having the boys play primetime, and the next year the girls primetime. Other leagues in Michigan discriminate in the same way as the Capital Area League does. The middle school equivalent of the Capital Area League decided to continue having middle school boys play all their sports in season, and to continue to play several middle school girl sports out of season. This practice was found to be discriminatory. We threatened another complaint, and they recently agreed to change their middle school girls also play their sports in season again. We believe there are many Michigan athletic leagues doing this same thing. Please help us encourage Michigan school leaders to stop this gender discrimination. Please emphasize naming and using trained local Title IX coordinators to help with this needed school leader education. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Next is Cynthia Diane Madsen, also representing the Michigan Gender Equity Team. She has a handout that's cold.
My name is Diane Madsen. I reside at 2548 North Borough in Grand Rapids. I am the current Vice President of the Michigan Gender Equity Team, past President of Communities for Equity, and the named plaintiff in the lawsuit, Communities for Equity versus the Michigan High School Athletic Association. That lawsuit was filed in 1998. It actually came to a full conclusion just a few days ago with, you probably read the newspaper article about the financial fees finally being paid off. The effort to end gender discrimination in the state, however, did not start with the lawsuit. It began several years prior to that, with discussions that were held with Misha officials, school officials, State Department of Education members, the Title IX officer here for the state as well. And that was, we took those discussions throughout the state. Boys were then, and they still are, being shown preferential treatment in athletics in Michigan schools. What concerns me most is that Michigan school leaders, which are serving on the Representative Council for the Michigan High School Athletic Association, created schedules that forced only female athletes to play in disadvantageous seasons and in inferior venues. Boys never, under any circumstances, suffered the harms of such discrimination. School leaders serving as Misha Representative Council members should have been educated in Title IX and known such practices were wrong and illegal. This lawsuit, as you probably know, is extremely lengthy, costly, and eventually, after 10 years, it did bring about a more equitable season schedule. However, this coalition is troubled to see that Michigan school leaders serving in athletic decision-making positions are continuing to discriminate and to have discriminatory practices against female athletes. To this end, several organizations have filed a coalition to hold school districts to their legal responsibility to provide equity under the federal law, the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution, Title IX of the Education Act of 1972, and the state's only, the state's own Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. As Tom already mentioned, we have used that act already in filing a complaint against the Capital City Area Athletic Conference. We recognize that in this day and age that school districts are faced with revenue challenges, but that is not an excuse for a blatant disregard of the law. Many of the issues that Tom presented and that we are concerned about require no increase in spending whatsoever to correct, only a desire and a dedication to provide all of Michigan's childrens with the benefits and the experiences that they are entitled to under the law. We are very hopeful that the lawsuit scenario will not need to be repeated. It was a 10-year battle. It delayed justice for hundreds of thousands of children. It cost millions of dollars, dollars that could've gone to increasing opportunities, but instead went to pay court costs and attorney fees. This coalition will help the State Board of Education in any way possible, but we are requesting a written plan of action to address these serious issues within 90 days. The coalition is here today to put school districts across the state and the State Board of Education on notice that we will remain diligent in the pursuit of our goal to bring equitable educational and athletic opportunities to all children of this state. We will use whatever resources we have available to us to accomplish this goal. I really appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you today, and I'd like to thank you in advance for your attention to this very serious matter. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna come back to our first speaker who wasn't in the room, so Dan Quisenberry, representing the Michigan Association of Public School Academies.
You had to point out that I was tardy, I'm sorry.
We only do that to our players.
Very prompt today. You have to stay after school. I hear you were prompted and very efficient today, but thank you, President Strauss and Superintendent Flanagan, and members of the state board. It's a privilege to be here today, and I want to take the opportunity to come during public comment because I know you acted on the Public School Academy report today. And not always do you hear good things about all that, the hard work that's been done by both the department and authorizers around the state to not only produce that report, but, and provide us all with a picture of what's happening there, but to do the ongoing monitoring, do the work that's happening in those schools. So, we're pleased with the performance. It needs to be better, and it's, we're working at making it better. They're doing it with limited funding. We see some reform happening in those schools, but the goal has to continue to be what was intended to be when we created charter schools in Michigan. How do we provide a 21st century education to every single child in the state and make that kind of quality available to any parent anywhere? So, we do see that students are performing well. Some highlights that kind of jumped out at us as we looked at our 240 schools with 103,000 students. We see 15 authorizers across the entire spectrum. It's exciting to see traditional districts getting in and looking at that mechanism of chartering as a way to offer new types of education in their communities. We're pleased about that. We do see students performing well, and I understand the issues we've all discussed about how best to do comparisons, but when you're looking at appropriate demographics, we see students succeeding, and that's an important item we don't want to miss. Approximately 10% of the students in charter schools do receive special education services. 64% of the students qualify for free and reduced-price lunch. We're excited about this number. 72% of the schools made AYP in 2008-09. They continue to have waiting lists, two-thirds of the schools, and they do it very efficiently. Again, you can, we can discuss the dollars involved, but at the way the department adds it up, it's about a $1,700 less per student amount. Those are the kinds of things we think are important in today's environment, a discussion that we've had about how do you create reform restructuring within limited revenues. We see some, some exciting things happening in the charter school sector. That's an important part of the conversations you have, and I want to make sure we're pointing that out. So, as a, as a follow-up comment, more than a subsection of 243 public schools, these, this is a mechanism that Michigan can continue to use to implement change as you move forward in the 21st century, do the kinds of things that we're applying to the federal government for, that we're trying to do to follow superintendent's lead. We see some success, excitement, a foundation that you can build on, and we want to continue to be an active part of the public education community that way, and appreciate the work that goes into that report. Two other quick comments. We value the report. Some people have debated in our community whether we ought to have a report like that or not. I would encourage you to continue to do it, and to do it for as many other kind of subsections of schools as you can. The more information we have about what's happening in our public school system, the more transparent we can be, the better off we'll be. You have our commitment to keep that report going and get information out about our schools. We also value working with the department. As I go around the country and work with my colleagues in other states, they aren't as lucky. So, we know we don't always agree on everything, but I always feel like I've got an opportunity to be here at this table or to work with the department, and that's appreciated. And then I would quickly just comment on the fact that we're eager participant in helping the state apply for Race to the Top Phase II. You have our commitment to work towards getting that done, and have appreciated that process. Again, an enormous task this department took on, and we were pleased. There was a lot of work that went into that second round, but it was an open, active process, and we were involved in it and will continue to be. So with that, we appreciate the effort.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan was the first one in before 3 o'clock yesterday, saying they support and encourage, so we appreciated that.
We have a group of individuals from Saginaw here, and they want to come to the table together. Mary Ann Dupuis, Saginaw, representing the Saginaw Education Association, Carlton Jenkins, Saginaw City Public Schools, and Delina Bates Allen, also representing Saginaw Public Schools.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Flanagan, President Strauss, and members of the Board of, State Board of Education. My name is Mary Ann Dupus, and I have had the opportunity to be a professional educator in the state of Michigan for the last 34 years. Seven of those years have been the result of representing my membership in our local union, in our organization, which is why I'm really here today. When the Race to the Top legislation began to unfold in December, I looked at this as an opportunity for Saginaw to begin to transform itself. We have an agreement that no other district in the state of Michigan, or I believe in the country, has. It's called a compact, and it's an agreement that's based upon sitting down, having candid, authentic conversations, and working collaboratively to deal with the issues that are at hand. And this year, we, at this point in time, through our collaboration with Delina Bates Allen, our president, we had the opportunity to go across the country and select a new superintendent, as ours was retiring. And I believe things happen for a reason. And in this situation, I believe that Saginaw has come across a man who believes as strongly as I do, that we have an opportunity to transform our community, and it begins with the schools. And I believe that Carlton Jenkins will be the leader as we proceed through this process. So I know that schools, and Saginaw is one of those, who has to face the realistic issue that we are in that area of monitoring. But I believe that with our leadership and with the way that we do business in Saginaw, we can become the pilot of how you can make transformation and change through collaboration and not through power. So with that, I'd like to give my time to Dr. Jenkins.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Flanagan, President Strauss, and other members of the board. Let me tell you, I am very excited to be here, okay? Be here with two partners, first of all, our SEA president, and also the president of our school board, Ms. Bates Allen. When Ms. Bates Allen and Ms. Dupuis came out, Dupus it is, you said Dupuis, now I'm saying Dupuis, when it came to Malloy, looking for a superintendent, and they talked to me very candid about the state of Saginaw. And I was actually in the run for Milwaukee Public Schools at that time, and a couple other places, and Little Saginaw. And I said, wow, when they put their story out, I, I was drawn to Saginaw, but then I chose Saginaw as the place that I wanted to come and bring my family, and to be a part of what they had explained to me of a transformation. I've transformed schools, been a part of transforming schools around the country, and I'll talk to you about that in a minute. But let me just tell you, we, together as partners, have come up with seven key elements that I've used in the transformation of schools, and said that we're committed to this as partners. This is very unique to see this, the superintendent, the board president, and the president of the union. We're talking about coming together and having clear board goals, and that was what was articulated to me, to have a community vision of partnerships, various partnerships, in the school, outside of the school, starting with us first. We're gonna use data to make our decisions. That's what I've done in transforming schools around the country, being a part of providing technical assistance, and then leading a charge in a couple of places too, which I could give you the evidence on that. But as a group, we talked about increasing expectations to bring about a better school system and a better community. We know too, that Saginaw is a part of the bottom line of the state of Michigan. And as we look at the Race to the Top, and what we tried to do the first round, and now what we're trying to do the second round, we have that model in place. This isn't just about schools failing, this is about taking the opportunity to put school systems, systems in place to improve a community, improve a state. So we're talking about reculturing, based on just respect and relationships, and this is what we're committed to. Extending our learning opportunities before school and during the summer, doing those things that we know in the Race to the Top that are very important in terms of proven practices. I've been a part of that. I'm not telling you about what I read, I'm telling you about what I've done, okay? And we, together... And we together are saying that we're going to take a community approach, team approach, nobody outpacing one another, having a union, having our board, and having the administration, teachers, and the community all on the same page. How do we do that? I'll give you a page in terms of where we are. When we start talking about where we are on that next page, it's evident. We have low test scores. We have low graduation rates. We have all those things that you talk about in terms of attendance rates, college going rates in some of our schools. We have some schools that are fine, fine, but they're not where we want all of our schools to be, and that's at the level of excellence. So, as a result, we're looking to our staff right now. We know we have low staff morale. We know that our staff development is not aligned. We've already ordered the Five Delta Capital Report to do an evaluation of our programs, and our systems, and how we're managing our finances. We are headed the curve. We started this conversation back, and we're looking to move it forward as we go on. One of the things that we know too, we've lost some of our community confidence. We know that, and we're going to build it back. We're already beginning things. We already see business partnerships want to come aboard. Now, we have other people, but what we're working to do is to get the internal together so we can go to the external. What our board goals is pretty clear. We say we want to meet AYP in all of our schools, but we want to go beyond that. Schools of excellence, that's what we're talking about. Provide appropriate learning environments. We're not only talking about academics, we're talking about safety. We're talking about those things. And I tell you, this is one thing that not only I bring to the table with the 34 years that Ms. Dupus have too, and we're combining our effort with the leadership of our board president now. So, what we're doing, we're, we want to review different models that are out there, and I'm very familiar with First Thing First, I'm very familiar with EdWorks, KnowledgeWorks, Talent Development, High School, I'm very familiar with all that, okay? I've evaluated programs, I've been a part of evaluating team, I've been in New Orleans as a part of technical assistance, been in Los Angeles, so a few places. I'd love to talk to you about it later, but respecting the time, I'll go on to the next We believe that not only do our local board play a part, but we believe you play a part. You know, we know where you are in terms of trying to make sure that we get this second round of the Race to the Top. We put together a good application, I think there was great leadership coming from our Superintendent Flanagan, working there with the MEA and everyone else to try to make sure we had that partnership so we can get in this second phase. There's a lot to be gained from having partnerships. We're trying to tell you, we know that we're struggling to put models together already to get to where we need to go. I believe in public schools. My daughter attended public schools, I believe in Saginaw. I live in the city of Saginaw, 1530 Ottawa, okay? And I believe that we can make it happen as a system. As a system, this is not just local, this is statewide. I know that Michigan wants to take its place back in the, as a front ra, frontrunner in the nation. I know that Saginaw can be a part of that. So, we come to you today, reaching out and saying we want you to be one of our partners, we want to be able to continue to communicate with you on a regular basis, we want you to use us too, as we go forward. Our goal is to promote a common vision, one that we have all agreed to and going to agree with our community, to reach out to the entire community, to promote the partnerships that focus on benefits to the students, to business community, and to our community at large, you know, which includes our parents naturally. And we want to create opportunities for discussions about how can we get better? We know we have new businesses come in, how can we be ahead of the curve and make sure we're not only producing the workforce, but educating our population so that they go to college and they can come back and contribute to our local, state, and national community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to say something too? Madam President, are you going to say something?
Well, I thought we only had about five minutes, but I just want to, first of all, thank you all for allowing us to take the time to come and speak with you on behalf of what we're doing in Saginaw. And as Carlton has indicated, we were proactive, we knew that we needed a change in Saginaw, and we knew what was going on with the Race to the Top, and we needed someone who actually have experienced it. And with Carlton actually working in Beloit, but then also working in Columbus, Ohio, in turning a school that actually had a graduation rate of what, 23?
21.3%.
21.3% in turning the school around, we knew that he would be the man. And so, our role as the board is to actually allow him to fly the plane. And as he fly the plane, when he actually come upon some turbulence, just let us know.
And I want to tell you, Madam President, we're low on fuel, so that's why I'm here. As a responsible pilot, I just want to let you know that.
And not, and not only do we want him to fly the plane and be the pilot, but we also have, we understand that we have to have a co-pilot, and that co-pilot has to be our unions. And we have come together here today to let you know that we've got a great crew, and we're moving Saginaw in the right direction, and we just need your continued support to help us move in that right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Very encouraging.
I had a chance earlier today to meet with this fine trio, and it's very invigorating to see that kind of triad together, working together to improve the districts, so thank you.
A model. Yes, it's a model.
Next is Elspeth Geiger from Ann Arbor.
Dave Michelson is from Saginaw too, you know.
Hello.
Dave brokered the meeting.
Yes, great. My name is Elspeth Geiger, and I came to you last month, and I spoke about what Jim Farrar spoke about, about Native American mascots in general, and specifically about Clinton, Michigan, and their use of the Redskins mascot. And I spoke about, as a student growing up there, how that affected me as a Native student. And I want to also bring about a very important point, that it's not just how it affects Native students and Native Americans in the state, but also through getting involved and through trying to make this change, I've heard a lot from, a lot of comments from the community directed towards myself and also through different media, and it's really represented a huge amount of ignorance towards Native American culture in general. And I've noticed that a lot of the people, and I hate using really broad, sweeping generalities, but mostly what I've heard is a great confusion with using the term Redskins, a derogatory name, and their confusion with that and other tribal names. They don't seem to understand that difference, they don't seem to know really even the basics of Native American culture. And I can tell you, as a former student going there, you know, and I graduated in 2004, which is not that long ago, there was very little in the curriculum towards Native American culture or history. In fact, some years, they even just skipped over it. And that is a huge educational problem, especially when they have these mascots that create these stereotypes. And I can tell you, on the gym wall, they have these, these paintings that are not only very stereotypical, this, you know, very angry-looking man, folded arms, very red face. It's also this weird cultural hodgepodge that makes no sense. You know, there is no Redskins tribe, and yet they're creating this stereotype, and it's confusing, and it's throwing the hood over a lot of kids' eyes, and making them not prepared to go out into this world. The school's mission statement is that they, well, in part, that they want to create students that can take part in a culturally diverse environment, and go out into the world and succeed. Well, with having this mascot, they're not, they're not doing that, they're not providing that education for these kids. I mean, I've seen that firsthand, not only going to that school, but also having to deal with the community and the backlash of trying to change it. There's a lot of passion that they have for their school, which is why I think they're blinded to this a little bit. But this mascot in general is completely unacceptable for an educational institution, and it is causing extreme problems. It's not allowing these kids, and it's not allowing the community to take part on a world stage. It really isn't. It's not only documented as very psychologically damaging, and I can tell you from experience, personally damaging, it's also hurting non-Native students and the entire community, and I think you needed to be aware of that, and I think you need to support us and help us move forward because so far, the, the school board's reaction has been anything but supportive of moving towards a more diverse and world stage. They still see it as them honoring Native Americans, when really, all they're doing is setting us back and preventing real knowledge to be learned. Thank you very much for, for listening and.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, too.
Thank you. Pause one second. I'd like to use maybe as chair, and I do this cautiously, but I think, as you were speaking, I'm thinking back to when I was a local superintendent, we went through this locally, we made the changes, and there was some up and down in the community, but absolutely, as you've stated, it needs to happen, and it's amazing that in this day and age, folks can kind of see some issues so clearly, and others, they don't understand or derogatory. Probably part of this doesn't, isn't helpful, that in our nation's capital, it's the Washington Redskins. I mean, I'm sure that adds pain and, and hurt to symbolize something even worse. But I'm wondering, I'm just thinking out loud, because this is two months in a row of appropriate testimony, and yet I'm feeling, I'm trying to describe on the part of the board, the State Board, that on the one hand, this is a local responsibility, and the board's done its job to have a model policy, but I'm wondering if maybe another step might be, and just for consideration, that the Legislative Committee of the Board might meet on this topic a little bit, because I think Jim brought up the possibility of what happened in, in Wisconsin, and maybe that would at least create the possibility of some other options beyond, beyond what your role is now. I mean, what I want to say on behalf of the board is they've done exactly what they need to do as a State Board, which is to have this model policy, and as best they can insist, but can't command, but insist that districts follow that. But there's still a little bit of this gap, and I'm thinking out loud to some degree, might that be a way to?
Well, that's, that's one way. Another way, we've been talking about it, because we did meet with Liz Bauer, Liz Bauer and Carolyn Curtin and I met with several members of the Native American community who talked about the lack of adequate information in our, in our social studies.
Curriculum.
Curriculum on Native American history and culture. And we've been trying to think about how we can adjust that, and one way was maybe to, using the Legislative Committee as one approach, but that's for legislation, but maybe we could have a, some kind of a referent committee, or some such group that could meet with us and sort of advise us on how to adjust our curriculum to our standards, to the grade level, and the grade level content expectations, to include more accurate Native American history and culture information. So, that's something that we thought, I was going to bring it up at the, I was going to bring it up at the Agenda Planning Committee.
I'm sorry for jumping in.
So, this is great, we can bring it up now and see what the reaction is, but I, that's one of the things I was going to propose on our Agenda Planning Committee.
Liz, and then John, please.
I was just looking at the Wisconsin legislation and how it works, and what it, what it allows for is that at a local level, if someone objects to the use of an Indian, or it doesn't have to be Native American, it's any race-based nickname, logo, mascot, or team name, then they can file a complaint, and the Superintendent of Public Instruction there can hold a hearing and rule and outlaw it, and they have to stop. And if they don't stop, they have to pay a fine, $1,000 a day.
Oh, my.
He could have a revenue thing.
The internet. John, please.
No, I think that's, that's very helpful, because I just wanted to, because it's been a little while, you know, make sure we restated what we had done, because four or five years ago, we had the same discussion, and we did pass, as you said, Mike, some policy guidance discouraging districts from this practice, correct? But the question is, what more could be done through legislation to put teeth behind it? And, you know, the Wisconsin legislation is an approach.
Moral of travel legislation would be helpful, right.
But it would take some legislation. So, I certainly support, you know, Kathy, your suggestion, let's look at the curriculum, let's also maybe have the Legislative Committee look at recommendations for more teeth in legislative action that could be pursued.
And you know what might be, thanks, John, because it might be that other issues, Title IX and others, where I always know that we feel, I'll describe myself, you feel a tad awkward because there are limits to our authority, but it certainly seems like we might be able to do something else, and so every time when we're approached by some of these topics, we feel a little bit.
Handcuffed.
Handcuffed to a degree, but there, here, this might be an example of some strategies where we could move it. I didn't think about it until Jim, Jim and I talked briefly before the meeting, but when he mentioned the legislation, it just seems like that's a possible consideration, and then as Kath said, the social studies course content expectations, and at least there's some action that we can work together on, because it is painful. I can't, I was horrified to see at a distance, I lived in this community at the time, but when the Milford Redskins changed from the Milford Redskins to, I forget what they are now, but I couldn't believe some of the similar kinds of outbursts that you've described with the language and the words that one would think are so outdated. So, this might be, Reggie, please.
I, I think it is really unfortunate that people minimize the feelings of this Native American community with respect to these issues. I remember a similar situation in the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, which covers Virginia and other, Maryland and other central Atlantic states. The Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals would have its Fourth Circuit Judicial Conference every two years, and during the course of this conference, there was a tradition dating back decades, or maybe even over 100 years, where, in which they would sing these Confederate songs, some of which alluded to darkies. And as the Fourth Circuit bar became more integrated, you know, African-American lawyers would have to go and, and listen to the, the judges, you know, singing, because there were no African-American judges on the Fourth Circuit, not until just a few years ago, listening to people singing about darkies, and these were the judges that they would have to appear before, who would be, you know, singing this song. And you think about the way that made those lawyers feel, it's absolutely the same dynamic here with having people, you know, doing these, these kind of mock so-called Indian rituals as part of their celebratory activities. And people just, you know, I think the example that I just gave, I think points up that, I mean, there, there is real damage done when that kind of atmosphere is created, and it makes people feel unwelcome, singled out, and as if they are not part of the mainstream of, of society. So, it's certainly something I think, I think we can do more about it.
Yes, I think we should too. Yeah, I was told about the, the meeting at, that board meeting in Clinton, that there was 500 people at that meeting, and that, the atmosphere was just so awful. The, the man who told me about it, who had been there, was just horrified, he just couldn't believe that 25, 20, 30 miles south of Ann Arbor, that they, the community was so completely different. And it's hard to believe in 2010 that people are still acting and thinking that way. So, we do have a tremendous job of education to do, and I think.
These are two suggestions that might get us closer to that, one with the Legislative Committee to consider some legislation together that we could support, and one with the important work at the classroom level, where maybe you'd be willing to help us sit through some of that, having experienced what it's like to not see a fully rich social studies curriculum, and in some cases offensive, but in some case, just by omission. Rob, you have something?
That's exactly what I wanted to speak to as well. Being a classroom teacher, I see that omission, and I see the, the lack of accurate information in many respects, and the dated information in many respects. And unless you're sensitive to it yourself, I'm part Cherokee, and you might not have known that, and so I'm very sensitive to that, and it's a very rich part of my curriculum in my classroom, but I can't promise that the other students in the district are going to have a similar experience. Formalizing the curriculum and modernizing it is the right direction to go, though.
Well, let's, by the way, I'll get Anna in touch, my wife's part Cherokee also, so we'll, but maybe we could, we'll bring, it looks like we could put something on the legislative agenda.
Right, and we can discuss it at the Agenda Planning Committee.
Planning Committee, that's probably the best place, and then, and that'll, that'll help us with this kind of limbo we're in, where we want to act, but don't necessarily have authority. These are some concrete examples where we actually could help make some change, and we'll go from there. And this is very unusual, we're breaking, and I'm sorry, I started this, but we're breaking protocol a little bit by even speaking. We're supposed to just listen during this time, but it seems like it.
We had to speak.
Right.
Sometimes.
Yes, sir.
I may interject something real quick. We made an opportunity, come into the Clinton School District and bring information, books and stuff into their school library, and we were told by the building principal, over my dead body, or. And we were told by the building principal, "Over my dead body, are you coming into my building?" So this is the attitude, and it's not just bringing the curriculum into the school. Who writes this? Who's writing these books and under what sordid history are these books being written by? Because it's not necessarily going to have the Native American perspective of history. And we're not going to find that in books today because to do that, we're going to have to assume some sort of guilt for the American law laws. So I understand the autonomy of local school districts. The fact is that, you know, if a decision is made within a school district that's exclusive to that district, that's fine. But these mascots permeate the entire community in which these districts compete with. So this whole attitude of scalp the Indians or kill the Redskins goes for every school district with which they compete with as well as regional.
That's a good point. I think these are two pretty concrete actions. We'll talk about it at Agenda Planning and hopefully be able to work together on a solution here.
Thank you very much.
Next is Calista Geiger, Ann Arbor. Hello. I'm here also to talk about Clinton, so I'm sorry to follow up your discussion. First of all, thank you for listening to us and discussing this right now. It means a lot to us after spending months and months of being ignored. So thank you, first of all. Second, I would just like to tell you a bit about what happened on the 29th, the school board meeting, for those of you that don't know. Since July of 2008, my sister Elspeth and I have been requesting to get on the board to discuss the removal of this mascot for all of the reasons that we've been giving you. They've been denying us every month. Finally, last month, they said, "We'll give you a special school board meeting to discuss it. You can come in, you and your sister do a 30-minute presentation, we'll have public comments so that everyone can talk about it, and then we'll vote." There were several problems with this. The first of which is that they held it in the gymnasium. So there were roughly 500 people there against us, surrounding us, while we had to stand in a room that had the logo right in front of us, three-foot tall letters next to us that said, "This is Redskin Country." On the floor next to us, these murals on the wall. We were just in this room filled with all of these problems that hurt us so much with our backs to 500 people that hated us and were wearing Redskins shirts in a room of all the people that had said to us online that they were going to stone us, that they were going to lynch us, that they hated us. So we went into this room anyway because we said we needed to do this opportunity. We needed to have a chance for all of us to actually do this on the agenda. We arrived there and we see on the agenda that we would do our 30-minute presentation, then they would vote, then they would have public comment. They didn't, that right there said that they didn't want to listen to us. We did our 30-minute presentation, which we had a couple of members, which Jim Farrar was part of it as well. And at the end, the interim director, Daniel Krickbaum, had his statement. Then they all proceeded to read from printed-off statements that they had, ready, prepared, about why they didn't, why they weren't going to change. They had them right there, already printed off, already prepared, they're everything for why they weren't going to be listening to us. And this was insulting on so many levels, the first of which is the fact that it was clear that they, they had already made their decision. We were just there for show. We, they had no intention of listening to us. And the second of which was that in every one of their statements, including the superintendent's, there were various personal attacks on myself, my sister, our family, members of our group, calling us liars, calling, just insulting us straight up, bringing up the point that we didn't, well, why didn't you girls bring this up in school? Like, well, look at the response that the community's been giving us now. Of course, we wouldn't do that as high schoolers. One, what power did we think that we had in school there? And two, look at the way the community's been responding to us. So this was the environment that we went into. This is what this school's creating. They say that it's respecting us and they say that it's honoring us, but what, where is the respect and the honor in kids driving by and yelling, "White is right"? I don't see how that's respecting us. I just wanted you to be aware of exactly what happened, what, how this school board's treating us. The superintendent attacked the Civil Rights Department in calling them biased and calling them fools and frivolous, and then attacking us personally. And that, and their reasons for not changing it were based on Sports Illustrated polls and a Wikipedia article, after all of this stuff that we presented to them, after all of our, not only our personal testimonies, but all of the resolutions, all of our entire group being there. They're just teaching these kids that if, that it's okay to ignore an entire group of people's feelings and it's okay to deal with a problem by just intimidating them and hoping that they'll go away. I just wanted you guys to be aware of what happened. Thank you again for listening.
Thank you very much for that.
Next is Stephen Breidenstein, also to speak about Clinton Community Schools.
Hello, everybody. My name is Stephen Breidenstein. I just want to first off say that I'm here on my own. Everything that I'm going to say is my own opinion. I've come to it on my own. And to start off with, actually, I'd like to, if possible, submit something. This is the printed-out agenda from the April 29th meeting in Clinton. It has the four agenda points right there, so I just, if possible, like submit this to the board so you can have a look at that. That is what Calista was referring to when she referred to the order of events of the, of the evening. Well, my, the way I've come to, I, I'm here to speak about the, the Clinton High School issue, the mascot issue. And the reason I, the way I've come to it is actually different. I, I'm not Native American. I've come to it through an academic background. This is what I studied at the University of Michigan. And, you know, it, it's something that has fascinated me for years. And I first met Elspeth at the dance for Mother Earth Powwow in Ann Arbor, Michigan. And so I met her there. I talked to Jim, I met other people. And I went to a first school board meeting down in Clinton. This is the school board meeting prior to the 29th of April meeting, simply to educate myself. At that time, I was familiar with the issue. I had a few thoughts and opinions, but I had certainly not made any opinions. So I went to that school board meeting and then, of course, I went to the 29th meeting, the, the meeting to which Calista referred to. And from my personal, objective opinion, simply put, you could cut the tension with a knife. There was emotion on both sides. It was a very powerful meeting. And one of the things that, in my, you know, academic career and what I've studied, one of the things I find most interesting about this issue is the perception of Native Americans, of American Indians. And one of the ways that I've seen it described, and I think is a good point to get across in general in order to help understand this broader topic, is the way that our culture deals with the American Indian. To put it simply, in American culture, the American Indian is kind of lumped together in the same category as pirates, ninjas, and cowboys. And that it is sort of the stock character that came into being out of a historical origin, but then was sort of chipped away through Hollywood and television till you started to get this stock character. And I kind of like to differentiate between, say, you know, these so-called Indians in quotation marks and real Native Americans. And for a lot of people, the reason why there is a lot of resistance to changing the mascot is that in their minds, when they see the Clinton Redskins displayed on the gymnasium of Clinton High School, they don't see a person. What they see is someone who they maybe saw on a film or on television, they read in a book, that they saw in a Thanksgiving pageant play when they were in grade school. That's another issue that I'm not going to get into. But for a lot of these people, it, it's hard to understand that, you know, American Indians are people. And one of the things I like to point out is that I have a copy, in fact, of Wisconsin Senate Bill 25. This is the one that people have referred to throughout the, the meeting here. It's the one that was signed this week in Wisconsin. And I think it's very important to point out and to emphasize the wording of the bill. And it says, refers to, quote, "The use of race-based names, nicknames, logos, and mascots." And I think that's a very important thing. Because while in the popular mindset, Indians are sort of seen with these other characters, if you will, I don't think anywhere on the little document we all got in the past few months, is there a little box you can check off that says pirate next to it, or ninja, or cowboy? But on the U.S. Census, there is a box you can check off that right next to it says "American Indian."
30 seconds remaining.
And in many ways, that is, I think, one of the fundamental issues, is how do we get people to understand that there is a humanity behind these images, that there is a real culture behind these images? And so I think that the reason why I've chosen to take up this issue, simply put, is that I think that changing these mascots essentially will bring about the greatest good for the greatest number of people for the long term, for the long-term health of our schools and our communities, and in many ways, our democracy here in the great state of Michigan. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I want to, if possible, I'd be more than happy to submit this if anyone would like to take a look at it.
Thank you.
It's a hard copy for you.
Thank you.
Next is Linda Syphert Kilborn from Marshall.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Bonjour, 안녕하십니까? Hello, how are you? I'm John Anem Kikue Dishes Nakas, She Kandotum, Forse Kamaz River in Donjaba. My name is Southern Thunder Woman. I'm Turtle Clan, and I reside in the Marshall Albion area. My English name is Linda Syphert Kilborn. I want to thank all of you for hearing us today. And I couldn't hear everything back there, but what I think I heard sounded really good, so I'm really happy about that. So I'm, I'm not really sure what I have to say is really going to be too much more of a fact, but I come here today first as a great-grandmother, secondly, as a member of the Michigan Coalition Against Racism in Sports and Media, and thirdly, as the president, or as we say, chairwoman of the Native School Movement. I also, too, was in Clinton on the 29th, but as a grandmother, I have 28 grand, or 38 grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, and 17 children of an extended family. So this issue affects our family in many different ways in many different parts of the state. Most of you know about the, the issue our family went through quite a few years ago, and I first got involved back in the late 90s. But I came across, and I may have pointed this out before, this little book, which is so great. It says, "Understanding Your School Board." And believe it or not, I picked it up off the table at Clinton, on their back table where you had to sign in. Here laid some of these pamphlets. So I picked it up, I read through it. And one of the things that really caught my eye was number three, who, it says, "Who is responsible for the educational program of the school district?" It says, "Each school district is governed by the Board of Education. Under state law, school board members are state officers who carry out the state's educational obligations at a local level. Every school board member must take an oath of office promising to uphold all laws." Let me repeat that. Oath of office, promising to uphold all laws. Doesn't say school board laws, it doesn't say local laws, it says all laws. So at that, I must ask, I know Wisconsin's got this wonderful thing that's just happening and everything, but Michigan has a law, but it's not enforced. Why isn't it enforced? The Michigan Constitution, page 36, Article 8, Education, Subsection 2, Free Public Elementary and Secondary Schools Discrimination. Section 2, "The legislature shall maintain and support a system of free, public elementary and secondary schools as defined by law. Every school district shall provide for the education of its pupils without discrimination as to religion, creed, race, color, or national origin." These logos that are being used in these school systems represent their images of spiritual leaders. The feathers that the spiritual head bonnets have in them are the highest honor our people can receive. It's part of our religion. We pray with those feathers. We do things with these feathers, you know? So by that alone, I look at this as breaking that Michigan Constitution law because that's our religion. We're being discriminated against by our religion. By using words like Redskins and all these other things, it's defining a race of people. That is breaking this law, discriminating against people. Color and national origin, as Native American ancestry, that is our national origin. And being a national origin, we are protected, a protected class of people. So when I look at this Michigan Constitution law, I see all this being broken. And I wonder, why isn't it being upheld? Why is this issue such a big thing when we already have this law that says this can't be done? So as a grandmother, that's the point I wanted to make today, to have people think about why is not this Michigan Constitution being enforced? It clearly states to me that these things should not be happening. We should not be having to go, as a community or as individuals or anything else, class or school per school, you know, like when someone calls us, they say, "Come help us." And we go and we try to provide assistance, you know, one school at a time.
15 seconds remaining.
Okay. And now, I'm going to do this real quick. As a member of the Michigan Coalition, also in this little pamphlet, it does state in here also that, "How do school boards make decisions?" And it clearly states that when making decisions, school boards seek the advice and counsel of the district's administrators, teachers, and other employees, as well as input for the community and specialists with, with knowledge about the topic under consideration. How are the people of the communities that we go into specialist? When we are the people that are being affected, aren't we the specialists when we tell them these things hurt, these things are derogatory? And also that, in their own school handbook, the majority of the time, under code of conduct, dress, and everything else, you can find these things that say they can't discriminate, but they allow it. In Clinton's handbook, under code of conduct, one of the things that's listed, it says, "Respect the civil rights of others." How are they respecting our civil rights by doing this? And that is my question. And just to close up real quick, we also have the, the school board on film in entirety, which, if I could just take a second. One of the things that I found the most intimidating thing of all was after all the things that had been decided, after 17 months, freely giving this material and everything, we show up at this meeting and they have a line, the door, that we have to walk through on both sides with parents, superintendent, and everybody grabbing at us, grabbing our hands, shaking our hands, the superintendent himself, he grabs my hand, he kind of yanks me towards him, and he swats me on my shoulder over here saying, "Oh, we're so happy you're here, we're, you're so honored you're here." I was so intimidated by that, after all this time, these people have been saying these things to us and telling us all the stuff they've been telling us. It was just such, I felt like I was in a plastic atmosphere, you know? And then for him to stand up there and say the things he said along with that school board and criticize civil rights, he embarrassed the NAACP, that what they did to that lady was just uncalled for and everything else. I think it's time that somebody starts doing something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Pollak from East Lansing, representing the Michigan National Good afternoon.
Hi, Mary Pollak. I'm the Legislative Vice President for Michigan National Organization for Women. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to get some things off our chests that we have written to you about. And you received a letter from us in March, and I hope that you have that in your file We have joined with Diane Madsen, who you heard from earlier, the Gender Equity Team and the AAUW, about a very important matter that we want to emphasize to you, both in our earlier letter and today's appearances. We're interested in the State Board, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, the staff of the department, and everyone involved with schools today, to know that we expect your oversight, your enthusiasm, and the use of your power and authority to advance gender equity issues. You just heard recited that part of the Constitution regarding discrimination in education. And one of the things I noticed was that gender or sex was not mentioned as one of the bases that's protected in state law. Our framers intentionally discussed whether or not to guarantee equal rights for women or on the basis of sex, for Article 1, Section 2 of our Constitution, and decided against it affirmatively. So, this discrimination against women is built into our culture, it's built into our lawmakers' genetics, really. And it has to be examined in our daily lives and in what we do in public policy on every We did a study, our task force, Education Title IX Task Force Chair, did a study, and I've handed it out to you here. We called, we looked at the websites in Wayne County's schools, and about half of them in Oakland County, to see if they said, "Who was the Title IX Coordinator?" And the results of that are that of the 34 school districts in Wayne County, 47% have a designated Title IX Coordinator. Incidentally, she called the school districts if she didn't find the information. So, about half of them do not have a Title IX Coordinator. 15% admitted to not having a designated Title IX Coordinator. And 38% have not yet responded to our request for information, you know, they're still thinking about it. And all but one in Plymouth, in Wayne County, are administrators. They're not folks in the schools. So, we think that the Title IX Coordinators in the schools should be folks who are accessible to the students, to the parents, and to the public, as well as to staff in the school districts. And that, really, the schools are not fulfilling the expectation of Title IX, that this Title IX Coordinator be the leader, and a resource, and an advocate for compliance with Title IX, and for student rights. And again, we contacted about half the school districts in Oakland County. All of them had designated a Title IX Coordinator, but all of them were in administration. So, we're here today to emphasize, a lot of work is still needed. I was the Title IX Coordinator for MSU in the early days of Title IX, back in '77, '78. And I only lasted there about 10 months. We had a disagreement over whether there should be sex equity in the basketball teams' compliance with Title IX, and that was the age, the era of Magic Johnson. And so, you know, that was a pretty high bar to get over, to have the women trouble. The women got $25 toward one pair of basketball shoes for the season. The guys got a pair of shoes a week. You know, their coaching staff was extensive. The women used a halftime graduate as student, and so forth and so on. And the women, like Diane Madsen, the women there had great courage, and took MSU to court, and went all the way to the Supreme Court, where the Supreme Court reaffirmed the trial court's finding that there should indeed be equal food and equal housing for female athletes. Now, we've come a long way since then, but there's still some inequalities, but nowhere near what there used to be. Diane Madsen, on behalf of her daughter and others, recognized that Michigan was out of sync on seasons for high school athletics. We find the same thing is occurring in the middle schools. We don't want to take eight to 10 years of litigation to have to get the middle schools into compliance. The girls at the high athletic levels want the same opportunities the boys have. I was an all-sport athlete as a kid, and I happened to go to a school that had lots of athletics for girls, mostly because it was a boarding school and they wanted to keep us occupied and out of trouble. And it kept us out of trouble, and it taught us leadership, it taught us all the things that the boys learn in sports. So, you know, I'm still committed, after many, many years of working in this, that girls should have these wonderful opportunities. Many of these girls of the Title IX era have grown up to be our executives today, and they're lawyers and they're doctors, and they're doing lots of things. So, we want to get you on board on this effort to reinvigorate the whole Title IX compliance effort. I and our Title IX Education Task Force Chair met with the Department of Education's Title IX Coordinator last year, and we were rather appalled at the level of activity that's going on here. It's a very low-level monitoring of the school districts. You know, in the heyday, we had half a dozen staff, you know, there were prizes given for the greatest compliance, there was a lot of activity around Title IX and gender equity issues. We need the department and the board to reinvigorate that effort, especially with, and start with this issue of the seasons, so we don't have to go through lawsuits again. And try to get at least these Title IX coordinators identified, the school districts to put it on their websites, you know, have a statewide conference for the Title IX coordinators, and get them sharing information and the excitement about doing gender equity work. We still have vocational segregation of tremendous proportions, and we need to address that. There are a lot of different issues out there for us to concentrate on. So, but this one is a good place to start. It's very easy to identify these issues that we have come to you with today. And, you know, I think that it doesn't take new money, you know? The race to the top issue is, should have the whole gender equity thing built into it. All that you do should have this gender equity stuff built into it, integrated into everything, and I think it'll be a lot easier for you. So, I thank you for the time and efforts you're making, and we hope to see some progress, and we'll be checking back in with you, because our organization intends to make this a priority over the next months and years. Thank you very much.
Can I just make a, I know we don't really do this, but I just want to say, as the former captain of the boys tennis team, how much I appreciate all of your efforts for Title IX, and I applaud your commitment to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker today is Sharon Dietz from Grand Rapids. Could be Dietz, I'm not sure. She is here representing the Diocese of Grand Rapids.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for listening to us here today, and I want to thank you for your service to the people of Michigan. And a small correction, I am the former Director of Native American Ministry for the Diocese of Grand Rapids. While I was the Director, we enacted a, excuse me, we enacted a resolution against Native American mascots and logos. And I just want to read it to you, and I'll leave it to you, and it's very brief. "To whom it may concern, the Office of Native American Ministry has a zero tolerance policy for the use of any Native American symbols or likeness as a sports logo. The use of Indian names and images as mascots allow the Native American culture to be distorted. Although laws are slow to change, increased awareness of the reasons why Indian names and images should not be used are advancing. Although some progress has been made to stop the use of Indian names and images as mascots, the mission to bring cultural awareness must continue in order to defeat indifference. Any high school with an Indian logo is teaching a course in hands-on racism. Stereotypical images of American Indians interfere with learning by creating, supporting, and maintaining oversimplified and inaccurate views of Native people and our culture. The use of Indian logo caricatures denies full and welcome participation to American Indian children, while at the same time teaching all schoolchildren to tolerate discrimination against Indian people, their heritage, and their culture. Regardless of the original intent, it presents harmful stereotypes of living people and living cultures to students in the school environment, and it certainly is problematic for Indian parents who are trying to develop a positive self-image for their children. One of the most difficult tasks is to admit that we are sorry for the harm that we have done to one another. Perhaps the first thing we must do is acknowledge our active participation in the various forms of discrimination that occurs in our American society today. Let us take this time to acknowledge the hurts we have inflicted on one another by prevailing on the Board of Education and the student body to choose another name." Respectfully submitted by myself. And this letter went to the diocesan schools in 11 counties, and out of those 11 counties, there were three schools that changed their mascot and logo to something else other than Native American. And what it took was education and everybody to have an equal voice at the table. And that's why I'm thankful of this table here, because I feel that we at least have a voice at this table. And for me, that this is not an issue of local control. Local control is appropriate only when dealing with issues whose impact is exclusively within that school district. The use of race-based nicknames affects other students and communities here in Michigan. So, I don't believe that it just affects Clinton, or it just affects the Catholic schools. It affects all the schoolchildren here in Michigan, and basically, all of our communities. I, too, was at the school board meeting on the 29th. There just aren't words to describe as a Native American, the feelings that I felt to be in that meeting. However, I did stay, and I did talk to the chaired foreman, and I told him that I was a lead facilitator in the Institutes for Healing Racism, which started, of course, at the Diocese.
Fifteen seconds remaining.
I'm sorry?
Fifteen seconds remaining.
Oh, okay. Well, that's okay. I just wanted to get it across that the, they were notified of people being anxious to come in with help to educate, and it was refused. And I'll leave you this copy of the resolution, if you want to make a copy. And again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, this has been most interesting, enlightening, and frightening. I think we have to, we have to do something, we will do whatever, we will do whatever we can.
Both these issues, it's interesting that the Title IX and the logo issue is so intertwined on a day when young people came to us and started with diversity as their theme. It's an interesting.
And, you know, Dan Crickbaum's a friend of mine, so I'm a little biased, but I also thought of the coincidence that the kids here from Farmington, who were preschoolers when I was a superintendent there, and we're here today talking about diversity, and then hearing Dan come up, who tried to assist in this regard in Clinton, and was not apparently treated appropriately. Dan was the guy, when I was struggling as a new superintendent, to put together a multicultural, multiracial body in Farmington, as it was changing rapidly, who just came in and helped us do this with great sensitivity and diplomacy, but also action-oriented. So, he's a good person to kind of keep with us.
I should say that the Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion, also was at that meeting, and wants to develop the statement, which I got yesterday, but I didn't put it with me, a very strong statement, and that, "Will we continue to work on this issue as well?" They're working with the Native American community in our Pleasant area, and will continue to do so. So, we could work with them, too, as we move forward with this.
Great. Well, thank you. This is very helpful, and we've got some action plans, and we'll look at next agenda planning for that, in that regard. Reggie, please.
You know, the courage of people to go in and engage in peaceful dialogue in the face of tremendous hostility evokes memories of a time about 60 years ago, and 50 years ago, and 40 years ago, when people were marching through the South for rights and dignity, confronted with the same kind of hostility. And that's happened over and over again throughout our history, and so it's just important people understand that this kind of peaceful, nonviolent struggle, the persistent peaceful, nonviolent struggle to confront discrimination is something that's a part of our history, and it's what has caused our nation to continue to improve over the course of time. So, I appreciate the courage. Thank you all very much for doing that.
One other interesting coincidence, my colleague from Civil Rights is here today and presented and gave an excellent presentation at Cabinet this morning that is on this very topic, and we came back, I only had about seven minutes to debrief with our crew before the meeting started, but it's in Carol's hands to work through our own plan in that regard, and I appreciate your attending today.
Could I just add one more thing in response to this gentleman? I am Grand River on my mother's side and my father's side, so I am Grand, that's all I can ever be, is Grand River. And my grandma made me promise her, when I was nine years old, that she was standing in line for issues like this, and she would bring us and her grandkids, and we'd color and play, and eventually, we got it, and we started listening to it, and she made me promise, "Don't stop. Keep going as long as you can." Because, and so, I'm here today for my ancestors who can't be here, who lived the struggle, and who fought the fights, and are no longer here. We're still here, and we're going to keep coming.
Thank you.
You have to keep on keeping on.
Well, that's an old one, but I remember that. Lisa, why don't you join us, and going to give us a state and federal legislative report? Speaking of legislative, it still is so ironic, right in our nation's capital, that politicians are talking about being, quote, "Redskin fans."
Yeah, I'm proud of it.
Yeah.
Didn't they used to be the Washington?
That was a baseball.
This is a football team. Now the baseball team is the Washington.
Lisa, please.
They were embarrassed of these editors.
I only have a couple of updates from when I drafted this late last week. One is that the anti-bullying legislation came out of committee. It does not have, if you remember, in the Legislative Committee, there was a discussion about a potential amendment that the board was not favorable of, and that amendment was voted down. So, the bill is proceeding in the version that the Legislative Committee supported, which you'll see later in this, but I just want to... which you'll see later in this, but I just wanted to let you know, it's supposed to be voted on by the full House today. So, with any luck, that will be moving to the Senate, and hopefully, we'll see some action on it before the summer session.
So, this, so this bill, the format is in the House is good. I mean, it's not as good as we wanted, but it's not bad.
Correct.
It's not so watered down that it's meaningless.
Correct.
It still is a good bill.
Right. There's always some people that, you know, it's kind of like, I think, I don't know if it was the superintendent or board member, Austin earlier, who said, you know, if everyone's a little unhappy, you're probably somewhere in the middle. It's kind of like that. There are some people who say it doesn't go far enough, and some people who still say it's too much, but it's moving, which is more than what's happened with any other previous. And, and there seems to be a coalition behind it, supporting it, to move it through.
Is there, what are the chances that it's moving in the Senate, which has never taken it up?
My understanding is that they, what Chairman Melton said during House Education Committee is that this version, which was also introduced by a Republican in the Senate, by the way, by Senator Jelenic, the same version, is that they have a deal to move this version through. Having said that, I think it's always helpful if the board weighs in, if you happen to run into your Senator, to Senators at various meetings that you're at, it's always good to encourage them.
Well, would it be, I think it might be helpful if the board reiterated its support for this, support...
Well, and I think that's what's going to happen later here, part of the motion from the Legislative Committee would be for the full board to, to...
To support this.
Right, right. So, that was one change. The other thing is that the K-12 and the School Aid Budget Committee is meeting tomorrow on testimony. They've asked staff to come in from the department. We're just going to be doing a quick update on the seat time waivers and where they've been at. There's been, you know, there's been quite a bit of attention given to those, and they just want to have a update. They've been hearing from several different technology groups and wanted to hear from what's going on from the state perspective as well. So, that'll be tomorrow, and actually, Mary Alice will be helping me with that, so. Beyond that, the Algebra bill that you saw is now on the governor's desk, and her staff is reviewing it, so we'll see where that goes. That is the version that, according to our math experts, does align, and I talked to Sally Vaughn about it, does align with the common core standards that we're moving towards. It's not, there was some confusion, and MERS talked about business math. The original Shelltron bill would have allowed a replacement of Algebra II with financial literacy, which is generally referred to as business math. This is not that. This would allow only with a personal curriculum, which means it's the smaller group of students. It's not the whole population of students.
A parent would have to agree.
Right, the parents and the superintendent both have to sign off on it.
I just meant compared to the old days where a lot of this was jammed through without a parent.
Right.
That's a big protection on not an automatic, put them over there.
Right. But yeah, it's just the personal curriculum, and it's a, it would allow for, right now, the personal curriculum allows for just a semester of Algebra II, if you're having difficulty, so that you can sort of stretch it out over a full year. This would also give the option of a semester of statistics or functions and data analysis, which is not business math. It's actually something that was part of our Algebra II content standards, and in all of the changes and everything, it sort of got divided into its own course, and I think some schools said, "Wait, wait, wait, we just set up our program to do that, and now you're saying it's not part of it? Can we keep doing that?" And I think that's part of why this version is the one that's been moving. So, I hope that clarifies any questions that you have, but I'm happy to answer more.
And Lisa, I'm, just, when I've been asked about it, I don't, especially the way MERS, with no malice, but the way this got characterized, it's not eliminating Algebra II. It's this fine-tuning of a personal curriculum option that is so much different and less destructive to our high school requirements than originally was sought after. I think this, if I, I don't know if I should say this is not, but I think for some, this was a face-saving issue to some degree. They're out on a limb, they needed some change, but it's really fundamentally, especially when they got rid of the business math piece and kept it in the personal curriculum, which a parent has to agree to, then I think it's, it's okay.
That's why I was, I hope, I'm happy if that's what it is, because we got the radio report that I heard that morning.
Horrible.
Disturbing.
Right.
They're suggesting we were walking away from Algebra II requirements.
Right. We'll have to just keep, and I'm sure if the governor assigns this, I mean, I guess they'll, they'll be ready to demonstrate how this isn't doing away with Algebra II.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's been...
That's good.
Not maliciously, but, but it was a middle-of-the-night type thing, too, which is a little bit disturbing.
Kathleen was in Ohio, that's why they tried to slip it past. Molly at the big judges' conference.
When I came home, Judge told me about this, I was horrified, you know? Oh, my goodness, what happened? So, I was glad to get your email.
You should have thought Justice Stevens was at that, right? He could have issued a stay.
Right.
Yeah.
So, this is back to the whole pure Michigan, that you two aren't allowed to leave the state anymore.
Right, right.
The State Board, the State Board's Legislative Committee actually met, too, as you know, and they had a few different recommendations to the full committee. One was related to the anti-bullying legislation, and it was a recommendation to support the legislation as it was introduced, and without that amendment that would have stripped out some important language, making sure that certain behaviors are included within the policy that local boards would have to adopt. I'm not sure what the protocol is. I'm looking to Eileen, do you go through these separately or all together?
If you, if you talk about them separately, that's fine. The motion is in one.
Motion is all one on, that's what we got.
So, that was, that was one of them. The second one was the shared superintendent's legislation. There's legislation that would allow an ISD superintendent and a local superintendent, be the same person essentially, that the districts could share a superintendent. There, the board folks themselves spoke out at the Legislative Committee, and, you know, there's members from the different associations there and expressed their support to the committee members, and the committee members did vote to support that legislation. And then additionally, there was discussion about revisions to Public Act 72, which is the Emergency Financial Manager Act. The, the discussion focused around the, the issue about clarifying the role and who has responsibility for oversight, and having it be Treasury, but you have that in your motion before you. So, those were the three things that came out of the Legislative Committee.
Is there a motion for discussion?
I moved that we, the motion that we got with the legislative report, which is to support all three of these pieces of legislation, but I don't know if there was any legislation yet drafted on the PA 72.
No, you had, your motion is to recommend that the legislature, that Public Act 72 be amended to clarify the role of MDE as it relates to the roles and responsibilities of the emergency financial managers, the role of the emergency financial managers between academic and fiscal responsibilities, that the MDE focus on its role with academics and deficit elimination plans, and that the Michigan Department of Treasury has responsibility for oversight of the emergency financial managers. So, it's a recommendation to them as they're drafting legislation.
I moved that we support it.
Moved by Kath, supported by Liz. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, great. Great work by the committee.
Good, thank you. So, we'll have our work in office at the next meeting, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Kath and John, did, did you want some further discussion on action?
Yes, I wanted to bring up some discussion this afternoon about follow-up to the, our approval of our statement on revenue, on reform restructuring on revenue. What do we do from here, and how do we make it have an impact beyond just passing it? So, that we work with the legislature, we develop a plan to work with the legislature, individual board members, or as teams of board members, I think, go into, talk with individual legislators, as well as sending them copies of all this, to send it to all the candidates for state office who would have had to file by today to become candidates, from governor on down, including people running for the Senate and the House.
Get those senators on the...
I think we've got one already.
I have an hour and 20 minutes left.
Rush right over to their elections.
You're not going to withdraw, are you?
Yeah, and it wasn't. So, I had to call the Oakland County Clerk and have it sent over.
For real? And we also had talked about...
Drain commissioners, that they get in on this, too.
Well, that's all right, too. But we also had talked about going to visit the editorial boards of the newspapers around the state, and I think we should, that should be included in this kind of a plan. And we just have to develop the details of how we do this, and who's going to do what when, and I think we all should be doing it together, so I would propose that we do that.
Get the editorial boards together, break down in teams, and...
And, and the legislature and send it, and meet with, send it to the candidates and then meet with them, representing the board, and not just...
In addition to those things you named, should we, since our mandate is to advise the legislature, should there be a sort of formal letter of transmission to the legislative leadership from us?
Definitely, I think we have to send a formal letter, but I thought this was a follow-up to the formal...
Right, and then send it to the candidates, all the candidates.
And to the governor.
The editorial board.
Since Naya's not here, we have to do it, so...
Reggie, please.
You know, and obviously, you know, Lisa Hanskineck, who's over there every day, can really go through the mechanics with this, because I would say with the committee designated by the president or the existing legislative committee, should work to do the one-on-one meetings that, you know, that we've done in the past on, on high school graduation requirements and other issues.
Right.
And that's what it's going to take to get some real feedback on the prospects of this, let alone to try to get it, to get it, get it done. I have always believed, after 1994, that getting big things done in an election year can be possible, particularly where, you know, where there's a crisis. So, you know, this is, we've bitten off a lot, but I, I know we have the leadership to, to move it forward, and if there's anything I can do to help, please...
Well, we're all going to help. So, yes. But I think we also, we also should include all the, the YET Alliance members, all the associations as well.
I think we took the team that contributed to it, to promote it.
The people that...
Pretty powerful.
We should send it, to all the people that testified before us over the last several months, I think, as well. And I think if, if any of you have any ideas about, if you want to tweak any of the language, we all submit that to each other, too, and, because there are a couple of things that we thought we might improve, but we didn't want to do it today when Nancy's not here, want to have everybody participate, so. I think all of those things should be taken into account and acted upon. If you all agree, I don't know if we need a motion to that, I think it's just procedure.
Sense of the meeting.
Yeah, sense of the meeting, and maybe even an agenda planning, there'd be a little more time for...
Make a list and figure out how we get this stuff done.
Yeah, divide up teams.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Sound good?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Great work today. Consent agenda we did, right? And any other comments by State Board members?
Talked ourselves out today, I think.
Well, boy, this is, this is a historic day.
This is really important. I've been wanting to bring up this business with the Native Americans for several months, but we were so busy, I sort of didn't want to mention anything else, because everybody was up to their...
Dr. Michelson has...
I think partly what happens, and it's, it is an awkward feeling for us, because you don't want to sound like you're making excuses that it's local control. So, there is some in-between here that we could try to work towards. But a lot of, it is appalling to hear what they described.
Yes.
It's shocking. You would have thought that was something out of the 50s.
Yes, unbelievable.
So, I hope...
Probably it's not unbelievable.
We need to vote on N.
M?
It's N.
L, M, N. We don't have an N.
It was included in the consent agenda, so we did vote on it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was the, and it included the list of public school academies and the statewide profiles.
Okay, great job. What a red-letter day, historic, two big tasks, and great job.